Okay. All right.
We're recording.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. Good afternoon, everyone. I'll call door this plan and zoning commission special meeting agenda, uh, meeting to order. Thank you, everybody for making time this Thursday afternoon. Uh, we do have a decent amount in the, um, in the agenda. Let me just start off by congratulating those who won the election. Um, and, uh, thank you to those who either won or, uh, ran and did not, or those who chose not to. Um, specifically Alexis, Dan and Peter. Uh, thank you guys for serving on this board. It's, it was a tough year, especially. Um, I don't think I'm missing anybody. I apologize if I am, but I wanted to thank everybody for their hard work. Uh, this past year was very difficult. Uh, but we all, I think, got through this very professionally. Um, to that Fairfield's benefit. So thank you for that. All right. Um.
If I could, Mr. Chair, um, I'm just going to say for housekeeping purposes, if you are not a member of the TPZ Commission and you turn on your video, I am going to turn off your video. Just as an FYI. Thank you.
Yeah. And the reason for that, members of the public is if your, if your videos are on, it comes to the top of our screens. Uh, and when your videos are off, I can see, and we can all, the commission and the direct staff can see our commission members easier. So that's why it just needs as a housekeeping matter to be, uh, for you both to be muted. Because this is all executive session stuff. Uh, for us to vote on and for videos to be off. It makes it a lot easier in this forum. Did I see Tom's hand up?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, Diane, thank you. I, I just wanted to, um, take a moment to uh, thank our, our departing chairs, uh, our departing commissioners, rather Chair Noonan and Commissioners Harrison Ford and Collins. Um, you know, thank, thank you all for your many years of service to, to our town and, and to this commission. I, I really enjoyed serving with you all and, and wish you all the best in what's next and, and hope you enjoy having your Tuesday evenings back. Um, and I, I really especially want to thank our chairman, uh, Chair Noonan. You've, you've presided over this commission with, uh, professionalism, uh, with a, a deep understanding of the law and a commitment to fairness and, uh, certainly something I've gained a, a greater appreciation for in, in the opportunities I've had over the the last year to, uh, chair an occasional meeting and, uh, you know, shepherding this commission through the creation of, uh, our Plan of Conservation and Development. And, uh, you know, the unprecedented, unprecedented number of applications, uh, over the last year that we've received. Um, has been no small feat and, um, you know, I, I have tremendous admiration for the work you've done, uh, as our chair in the, in the years that, uh, I've had the opportunity to serve under you and with you. So thank you, Chair Noonan, and, uh, and thank you to our other commissioners.
Thank you, Tom. That means a lot from, uh, coming from you. I, like I said, I've, uh, it's been an honor to serve the last 10 years, five, I think, as chair. Um, the rest of it will be fine. I've, I'll enjoy it, I'm sure, uh, and look forward to seeing what good work you guys do moving forward. Oh, thank you for that. Um, let's jump into our old business, if that's okay. Ninety-five, I'll call the first two items together. Uh, one A, B, one A and, uh, A and B. Old ninety-five Old Post Road. An application of Metro Holdings LLC to rezone and a special permit application of Metro Holding Company to construct a three-story building. Uh, as I said, I'm trying, try and keep this to an hour, be mindful of people's time. Uh, we'll see where things go in general. I asked staff, uh, staff comments have already been distributed. Uh, both the Director Harrigan and myself had asked that everybody read the staff comments beforehand, just so we can, um, unlike, unlike normally reading them during a gearing, just to, you know, be mindful of everybody's time and to be efficient. Um, with that then, unless there's anything, I'd look for a motion on these two items. Commissioner Braun.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
All right. That's a fair point. Uh, Commissioner Seibert seconds. Commissioner Ford is, uh, not here. I believe may very well had to recuse himself on this anyways. Uh, it looked, so is Commissioner Seibert up?
Yes, thank you. Yep.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay. So Commissioner Seibert is sitting for Commissioner Ford. Thank you. Commissioner Braun, go ahead.
Yeah. So the same, um, reasoning I'll use for both applications, the zone change and the special permit. Um, I believe it's consistent with both, um, the old and the new, uh, Plan of Conservation and Development. It's an excellent project for this area. It basically is an upgrade from an old abandoned industrial site that's pretty ugly and uh, not, not, not aesthetically pleasing at all, not, not making good use of the property to a, a, a nice mixed-use development with commercial as well as, I think, six units of apartments. And that's exactly the type of modest-scale project that I really like. It fits in with the neighborhood. It adds, uh, housing, it adds commercial. And it goes along with the P O C D. I think, um, the zone change is warranted. I don't think we heard any opposition. Um, it was just looking at the aerial that we looked at last time. It's definitely going to add to the ability of people to walk around the area. So it'll be pedestrian as well as bike-friendly. I think it will serve our, uh, the future of the town as well in that part of Southport. So I fully support this.
Commissioner Seibert.
No, I echo, I echo those comments, so I have no further to add to, uh, to Commissioner Braun's approvals. And comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do we have, I, Commissioner Harrison jumped on. Um, I think she just needs to be unmuted.
I believe she was made a host earlier, but then she might, maybe she, um, John, if you could admit her into the meeting.
She's, yeah, we're, she may, uh, be on her phone. She dialed in.
Okay, all right.
Um. I, I see now what Oscar, what phone number or user number?
He says he's, it says she's there, but not in the meeting, but I don't have a way to, to let her in. He's in my.
I saw, I saw a box come up saying she's waiting in the lobby, but it disappeared.
Hmm.
Can she test her?
Well. I almost prefer if we're going to do that, I, let me call her. Maybe I can make it easier, call and see if she can hear us. I'd rather you hear her voice than.
I mean, I can hear you guys, but Jonathan needs to let me in.
Yeah, Jonathan's having trouble with that.
Well, we can hear you on the phone if you want to vote that way.
Maybe she.
You guys hear Alexis through my cell phone?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, uh.
Peter, I'm just having some tech issues here.
No worries. So just to, we, we've got a motion to approve ninety-five Old Post Road by Commissioner Braun, seconded by Commissioner Seibert. Commissioner Braun gave comments. Commissioner Seibert did. So I'm just going to ask anybody else.
I have notes, but, um, my computer's still updated. But, like I went.
Uh, it's just the, how it works out sometimes with computers, unfortunately.
Yeah, it's okay.
It's why we moved away from the completely, uh, uh, remote one. Um. Commissioner Corcello, then I'll go.
I, I don't have much. I think it's a, a really nicely designed project. Um, I think from an architectural perspective, fits in um, perfectly with, with, um, with what's around it. I think, um, it's a, a great reactivation of an underutilized site, and I think it's really going to enhance the, the surrounding area and, and certainly, uh, meets the, the standard criteria. Um, for that, as Commissioner Braun outlined.
Thank you. I, I, I support the project as well. I thought it was, um, for this area, uh, better use of, um, what could otherwise be there and well-designed and I think what we're looking for in general, but, uh, especially around this area of town and for what it once was too, with better use. Anyone else? Can we put this to a vote? Go ahead, Alexis.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you on my phone.
And we can hear you. Yep.
I couldn't really hear them too well.
Can everybody hear her through my phone?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Any, any of these, I do support it. I think it's a great project. I think it's a great use, reuse of this property and, um, anyway, that, that was, that's all. I'm, I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Sorry. Yeah. Commissioner Harrison, keep trying on your end. Um, because this is, I mean, less than ideal, but at least we can get your, uh, get your involvement while we're working through it. All right. If nothing else, can we put this to a vote? If you can, go off mute because it's going to be easier for me to tell who votes yes or no. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Raise your hand as well.
Aye.
I think that's seven. I see, uh, five hands, me six, and Commissioner Harrison seven. So it passes unanimously. All right. Next item is I'll call C and D together regarding fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street Zoning Regulation Amendment Modification Application of fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street. And fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street Modification of Zone Change Application of fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street LLC to establish new affordable housing district. Uh, may I have a motion, Commissioner Randolph? You're on mute.
Yes, just one, one clarification for Director Harrigan. Um, your comments only addressed the, um, modification of condition of approval. So does that cover both C and D?
Um, it, it does because primarily, you know, the, the zone change really just, um, you know, is a, is a complement to the zoning regulation amendment.
Okay. So I, I move to approve with the, with the following conditions. Uh, to change the language. Um, and I don't know if you have, if you all are familiar with the language that's in there. Uh, but basically to add the sentence, um, it says the applicant shall provide landscaping, including trees to mitigate views of the building from the Merritt Parkway period. I'd like to add as reasonably determined by the Merritt Parkway Conservancy in coordination with town staff.
Maybe not determined, but how about maybe is reasonably coordinated?
Is reasonably approved by the Merritt Park, Parkway Conservancy.
Okay. I just, and I apologize, I'm taking a little, uh, leave here, but the, the point was, I think from the applicant was not to have the third party make the decision. So that's why I suggested instead of determined by them, coordinated by the, uh, Merritt Parkway Conservancy, but this is your motion. So keep going. Sorry.
Yeah. So I'm going to say is reasonably determined by the, because otherwise they have the unilateral, unilateral right to determine what a mitigated view is, which may not meet the satisfaction of others.
Mr. Mullen, can you see if you can unmute, uh, Commissioner Harrison? If you find her, please. Keep going, Commissioner Randolph. Sorry.
That's, that's my only change.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought there was a second one. Uh, my mistake.
No.
Is there a second?
I see Commissioner Levy's hand is up. I don't know if that means, if that's him second.
No, um, I'm not prepared to second since I think the, uh, amendment creates the problem we're trying to avoid.
Good.
That's fine. I saw your hand up and I thought it went down. Thank you. Commissioner Braun?
Oh, we don't have a second yet because I was going to do this.
We were, if we don't have a second, then I'm going to ask for another motion, I think, that, which is fine. I think, I think Commissioner Randolph, that's what the concern was, was having the third party make the decision again.
Okay. So I'll say as recently, as, okay, so I'll withdraw that and say as well, I'll say coordinated with the Merritt Parkway Conservancy and Town Staff. Because I might be able to.
Your motion to approve with the new condition being now, instead of determined by, it's coordinated with.
Merritt Parkway Conservancy and Town Staff, yes.
Is there a second to that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. So Commissioner Randolph, go ahead.
Um, the only reason for the change is that I don't want, as, as previously stated, I don't want the applicant to have unilateral right to determine what mitigates the views. Um, and adding the word, you know, but coordinating reduces, basically brings the Merritt Parkway Conservancy into the conversation and Town Staff, uh, rather than the applicant having that unilateral right.
Thank you. Commissioner Corcello?
Yeah, I, I think, um, that addresses the, the main concern with, um, the previous condition, which was, uh, which I think would have posed a, a challenge in giving a third party, um, is essentially veto power over that. And I think this strikes, uh, a reasonable bal- balance between that, between those competing concerns.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Braun. Oh, uh, Commissioner Harrison, then Braun.
Can you just clarify, um, Chairman to, um, Commissioner Randolph, can you clarify what is being coordinated and can we just be maybe a little more explicit?
So the.
Go ahead.
I made that some stuff earlier.
Yeah, I'll, I'll read, I'll read the full context. It says the applicant shall provide landscaping, including trees to mitigate views of the building from Merritt Parkway. Right now it ends there. It's a period. Um, I'm adding coordinating with the Merritt Parkway Conservancy and Town Staff.
So the landscaping.
Yes.
Thank you.
To mitigate the views specifically.
So who has veto power then?
Well, let's, Commissioner Harrison, are you set? Are you all done for now?
I'm set. Yep. Thank you.
Commissioner Braun, go ahead.
Who had veto power and who now has veto power over the project?
Uh, I don't think, Commissioner Randolph, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think it's a matter of having veto power. I think at this point the applicant is burdened, has the burden of providing a landscaping that will uh, buffer it from the Merritt Parkway and they are going to coordinate that with, um, Merritt Parkway Conservancy and Town Staff. But again, this would also come back to us or to the commission. Um, if and when a site plan is given. So this is just the regulation amendment stuff. So it's burdened, the, there's no.
So that gets me, yeah. That gets me to my point, which is we, oh. Okay. So I, I just can't support anything that's based on a concept as opposed to a site plan. I think this is still an end run around eight dash thirty G because you know, we have applications coming in without specifics enough on which to make an informed, um, decision. And that's not what we should be doing. So I, I can't support this based on the original. So I can't, I'm not going to support the modification, even though a modification, wait, the modifica, the condition of approval, uh, the applicant has tried to water down a little bit, I guess. Is that it? Um, Commissioner Randolph, and you're trying to buff it up so it's not watered down as much?
Well, I think they came to us for the modification because we initially approved these regulation amendments that included language that required the Merritt Parkway Conservancy to sign off on landscaping. And I think they fairly incorrectly noted that that's prob, a problem to have a third party have that kind of power and they've making the request that the, uh, language be amended first as they provided, and then now Commissioner Randolph's motion is to at least require them to coordinate with Merritt Parkway Conservancy and staff.
So I, I don't, yeah, I don't think that's adequate. I, I think there's enough evidence presented at the hearing that this would permanently alter the visual of the Merritt Parkway, which as is, is as, is in evidence is the largest historic asset of any town it runs through. It's on many registers of historic, um, assets. And it's a, you know, scenic parkway. Also, the stormwater issues are a problem because this is part of the headwaters of Mill River. Mill River has two headwaters. Part of it comes out of Hemlock. Part of it comes out of the Eastern Reservoir. This is the part I think that comes out of Eastern Reservoir. And, um, I, that's a, that's a problem for me as well. So this is, is too much on a very delicate parcel of land. And any manner of conditions, especially being slightly watered down from what we had, is not going to be adequate. So even, even with the Merritt Parkway having veto power, I wouldn't have supported this as well.
Thank you. I mean, I find the, uh, the modifications requested with, uh, Commissioner Randolph, um, additional wording to be adequate. I, I don't, I'll reap. We already kind of rehashed, uh, why we made this vote, uh, fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street earlier. Right now before us, it's just a very limited targeted modification request of what we previously did. I'm not, I don't think, feel the need to rehash why we did what we did previously. And I know there was dissenting views and that's fine. Uh, as far as design and all the, uh, impacts that would have on the area, area. Right now, the motion, the application is a modification, which I think is fair from their end. Again, not having a third party have veto power, but then so, but then adding Commissioner Randolph's language, um, again, is a, is fair on our end to at least have, have coordination. So I'm in favor of this. Anything further? Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I just think the record should be clear that, uh, there's no specific veto power in connection with this text amendment. Uh, when the site plan is actually submitted, then it'll be, uh, up to the commission to, you know, determine, uh, whether, whether or not to approve this specific site plan. But I think the intention is that the applicant would, um, I mean, coordinate, to my mind, means that you've worked to try and receive, you know, achieve harmony or work harmoniously together, uh, and provide reasonable and due deference to each other. And that's what I think is meant by the word to coordinate. Thank you.
Anything else or can we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
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 I can't see anyone on the screen.
I know. I'm going to go through it. Commissioner Randolph, Corcello, Levy, Noonan. Uh, vote in favor. Anybody else vote in favor?
Seibert.
Commissioner Seibert votes in favor. All opposed.
Can you see us? Cause I can't see you.
I can't see you. So just tell me if you, I, I assume you're voting in opposed based on what you said.
Correct.
Commissioner Harrison was opposed as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So Commissioner Harrison and Braun, uh, oppose.
Can we put the screen back up?
Our screens are working. I'm much, I think it's on your end.
Yeah, we lost your video, Kathy.
Which honestly, Commissioner Braun, I thought might be better for you because it looked like you were, um, freezing up a bit. So no, I mean, just because it, it saves, um, it saves memory and stuff. We can hear you fine. So I didn't want, as long as we can hear.
Thanks.
All right. Next items. Who's, sorry, hold on one second. Um, sixty-five Station Street Zone Change Application of SF Station Street LLC to rezone portion of parcel. And sixty-five Station Street Special Permit Application of SF Station Street pertaining to a new office building and associated parking and landscape improvements. Okay. I think that's just the two, right? The other, just the others are for buyer. Yeah, okay. All right. So for those two items, is there a motion? Commissioner Randolph?
I'd move to approve with the following conditions. Uh, they're, they're kind of long. Should I share my screen? That'd be easier.
Is that easier, Commissioner, uh, Director Harrigan?
If, if the commissioners think that's fine, that's, that's okay. I think you have the ability to share.
Yeah.
Why don't we, if that's okay, why don't we do that? So if I can see it as you're going. Let's make sure it's only screened up just in case.
Yeah, motion's to approve. I think this is it. All right. Let me know if you, um.
We can see it.
Okay.
Yeah, we can.
So I'll, I'll just, I'll read this and then I'll send it to, um, so the motion, uh, I've got a motion to, I move to approve sixty-five Station Street subject to the following conditions. Um, update the tree survey before permits issued, um, update, submit an updated existing conditions plan that accurately maps all trees that are greater than six inches, including the missed large mature trees that are not on the plan right now with arborist certification and tree warden concurrence. The current plan is incomplete. Uh, tree preservation, design and construct, construction shall avoid material injury to the priority trees in their critical root zones to the tree warden's satisfaction. The applicant may use any reasonable solution compliant with applicable standards. If loss or fatal, uh, compromise occurs, replace at a three to one caliper inch or equivalent of approved, uh, for any trees that are lost. Um, make, implement plan revisions to achieve condition two. Revise the engineering as needed, relocate, resize the stormwater features. Uh, adjust, relocate retaining wall, reroute utilities, reduce paved areas, dry aisles. So preservation in condition two is met. Staff may approve field adjustments that further reduce impacts. Parking, uh, reduce onsite parking where supported by joint or shared use arrangements under section twenty-five point nine. Um, record any required agreement prior to the CO. Um, Station Street sidewalk, build an ADA compliant sidewalk along Station Street frontage and tie it to the nearest, um, existing facilities with field adjustments to close logical gaps, uh, while coordinating with, um, the tree preservation.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Levy?
Commissioner Levy seconds. Uh, Commissioner Randolph, go ahead.
Um, the, the, the architectural merits of this building are consistent with the neighborhood. The scale of the building is, uh, consistent with the adjacent buildings. Uh, the use while, um, an office is also consistent with the, uh, uh, neighborhood design district. Uh, the main issue with this property is, is really the, uh, the proposed elimination of mature trees on the back of the parcel adjacent to the church, which weren't even picked up in the survey. Um, the parking, um, the parking that they proposed, while it complies with our ordinance, seems to be in excess of what's actually used. Um, and so eliminating the, some of the parking or redesigning the, uh, the underwater stormwater storage system, uh, will prevent uh, the elimination of those trees, which really are likely to have the greatest impact to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah. So I agree with, uh, what Commissioner Randolph just stated. Um, I think it's an appropriate use right here, right next to the, uh, train station. Uh, it's a reasonably sized building, uh, and appropriate for the neighborhood. Uh, I think with the reduced parking and the, um, emphasis on preserving the existing mature trees, uh, that that'll vastly improve the site plan uh, for the benefit, uh, both of the applicant's property and the surrounding, uh, neighborhood. Uh, so based upon that, I would approve that. Uh, I'm not sure whether or not they need the zone change at this point with reduced parking, but, uh, I see no reason not to, uh, uh, also approve the, uh, make it a single zone.
Thank you. Ms. Harrigan, quick question. Remind me, I didn't look through your staff comments quickly. Was there an opposition, uh, petition?
Sorry, there is. So, um, a zone change is going to require, uh, five votes in the affirmative.
Which is fine. Yeah, that's fair. Um, the one thing Commissioner Randolph also, I remember the, um, the applicant had offered for that area of trees on the, if you're looking on the plan, the bottom left area to be, it was a conservation deeded or what, essentially open space or whatever. What was it, Commissioner, Ms. Harrigan? Do you remember?
Um, yes, I think they, I think they were open to a conservation easement for the green space that's shown on the plan. If I understand, um, Commissioner Randolph's conditions, though, he's asking for, uh, a little bit of a larger area than that.
Okay. All right. Never mind. Thank you. I'm all set with that. Comments from the commission? Commissioner Braun, go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I really, really appreciate, uh, Commissioner Randolph's, um, effort to protect the trees, especially the specimen trees that are there. I, I hundred percent do, but I just can't support reducing the parking because that will lead to the, all the problems that were talked about. I hundred percent do, but I just can't support reducing the parking because that will lead to the, all the problems that were talked about by, by the neighbors, which is a congestion in the streets. The project cannot be here. I think we're voting on everything now, not just the amendment, the whole application, right? So I, I just think, first of all, the NDD district is supposed to be servicing the local neighborhood, which clearly this is not. We don't really know what's going to go there, but it's an office. It doesn't look like it's some local business that the local neighbors will be patronizing, patronizing. So I think this is too much for this area, based on everything we've heard. It's a very unique area with significant traffic congestion issues. And it really can't be fixed. When you talk about putting a one-way street, that's a non-starter, but the fact that it was mentioned sort of admits that there's a problem there. And the problem is significant, it can't be fixed. I don't think it can go here, and I, I appreciate saving the trees, but I don't think we can get rid of the parking. So I can't support the amendment, but I also can't support the application, so.
Thank you. Other comments? I'll jump in then. I, I, I thought this was a very conservative and well-thought-out application. I mean, we've seen enough this past year with everything going on in town that's to be, I think, less than what the height could have otherwise been, was somewhat of a relief. And I understand the neighbors' concerns about what it's going to be used for, the traffic. They're gonna have to come back to, as far as what the actual use goes in there, they're gonna have to come back if it's not as of right. So you'll have, you'll have that determination later. That's what would be expected at this point. Traffic, the main road seems to be, you know, an issue, but as far as this local road, this offset road that goes, that would be off this property itself, it doesn't seem to be an issue. I acknowledge that everybody sees traffic concerns and delays and, you know, as far as the evidence there and how much extra trips are going to be generated, I just don't see this being anything other than a drop in the bucket that doesn't rise to the level in my mind to prevent, prevent the site being developed as they're requesting. Amendments are fair. The offer to have that conservation area, I thought was a big win for the neighbors as well. The fact that they're going to be potentially, will be expectantly using the property as such, I think will benefit the neighbors in a lot of different ways too, is to avoid what could potentially go there, you know, at any other points in time as well. So I, I think this is a, notwithstanding the neighbors' pair character, characterization to the problems in the area, I thought this was a very reasonable and conservative application, so I, I would be in favor of it. Any other comments or questions? Put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
I see Commissioners Noonan, Levy, Seibert, Randolph and Corcillo. All opposed?
Opposed.
Commissioner Braun?
And just, just as an FYI, Commissioner Harrison had to drop off momentarily, but she will be back.
Okay, in, in light of what the numbers are, I think we can leave it as this. Do we have any other alternate, well, I think we'll just leave it as this, then five, one. Considering that the five would net for the zone change and for the site plan. Okay. Alright, that ends the Station Street. I am recused on Byro Street, so I will leave Commissioner Corcillo to handle, Vice Chair Corcillo to handle the remaining three. As I step off again, thank you, everybody, for all your professional hard work over the year. I'll keep in touch with everybody, look forward to seeing what happens.
Hey, Commissioner, Commissioner.
Thanks for everything, I mean, Commissioner. Chairman.
I, I want to thank you so much for your dedication to this commission and your hard work over the last ten years. It's really, you know, we, it, it's, it's people like yourself who have a love for the community and really make a difference. So thank you so much. We, we really appreciate it. Learned a lot working with you and I appreciate your dedication.
Thank you, Commissioner Randolph. I appreciate that.
Ditto that. Thank you, Tom.
I want to, I want to share that as well. You know, it's been eight years. We've worked together and it's been a pleasure and thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Steve, very much. Thank you.
Chairman Noonan, I'm back on. I can see my video now. I just wanted to thank you. It hasn't always been easy working with the likes of me. We haven't agreed on many things, but I do appreciate your leadership and you have a nice way with people and I appreciate your flexibility. So good luck with everything you do in the future.
No, thank you, Commissioner Braun. We've always sometimes been at loggerheads, but I think we both, no, we, we both respect each other, I think. I appreciate your support of me as chair over the years. And I appreciate your voice because always, it's always helpful to hear somebody in disagreement to temper and to question, make a question of what you, where you are. So I appreciate your time and efforts as well. Thank you very much. So I'll, I'll leave off. Thank you very much. Take care, everyone, and I'll keep in touch.
Okay, I will call our, our last three items together on items. GH and I, one oh eight Byro Street Zone Change Application, zoning compliance modification, amendment application and modification amendment application. I will not, again, as, as Chair Noonan had, had indicated at the start, we will not do full staff comments. I may ask for Director Harrigan to read a piece of that in a moment, but can I first get a motion on the item? Commissioner Randolph?
Um, as much as I really don't want to, we're, we're required to abide by the law and I'm making a motion to approve. This in no way reflects my endorsement or support of the project. It's really an endorsement of support of upholding the law. So I move to approve the application for modification of the eight thirty G site plan for one oh eight Byro Street. Incorporating comment, staff comments one through eight as conditions of approval. In addition to the following conditions shall apply. The decorative cupola shall be removed from the design as it serves no functional purpose in providing affordable housing and its elimination will not adversely affect the overall character compliance of the development. All other conditions of the approval remain in full force in effect.
Thank you, and, and you will be incorporating the staff recommendations. That's part of, that's what you're getting at?
Yeah, one, one through eight.
So, so I, I'm sorry, can I, Director Harrigan, can I just have you, given that we did not go through staff comments, can I just have you read those condition, those recommended conditions?
Yes. So should the commission determine that approval of the project is warranted, TPZ staff recommends the following conditions. Add the revision to the zoning regulations, regulations for Byro Development District as indicated in the staff comments, and these include, sorry, these include equal distribution of the units by location in the affordability plan. Also, I think that's the only modification to the regulations. Removal, item number two, removal of the decorative cupola as it doesn't further the affordable housing goals. Item number three, as strongly recommended by the fire department in order to provide adequate fire department access on Finn Street, the applicant must contact the local traffic authority to request review of the no parking designation and fire lane striping of the public right-of-way on Finn Street adjacent to the entry of the building as shown on sheet eight dash three. Byro King's Arms of the applicant's architectural plans dated nine one twenty twenty-five, prepared by GEDS Associates, Inc. Number four, the ten parking spaces in the southwest corner of the lower-level garage is shown on sheet A one of the applicant's architectural plans dated, I'm sorry, it's the same date, nine one twenty twenty-five, prepared by GEDS Associates. Are tandem and not practically functional as independent spaces. The tandem spaces should be assigned to singular units with two vehicles only. And I think this in part is addressed by the applicant's revised text amendment, but just wanted to make sure that that is also covered. Number five, the directional arrows on the ramp for upper-level parking deck need to be revised to reflect standard direction of traffic flow. I think that those are inadvertently in the wrong direction. Number six, increase the ramp to twenty-four foot wide to lessen potential side swipe impacts as a reasonable accommodation to prevent negative impacts due to the project's design. The town's zoning regulations require two-way drive aisles at a width of twenty-four feet. This applies to all places where two-way traffic is present in the parking garage and is consistent with the standards within the ITE Parking Generation Manual. If I could just add, this is not an open driveway, this is a driveway ramp with walls, which makes this concern even more significant. Number seven, the applicant shall provide additional observation of test holes slash soils testing and consult, in consultation with the engineering department to confirm adequacy, accuracy of soil classifications and precipitation rates that demonstrate the adequacy of the proposed stormwater system prior to issuance of the building permit. Due to the site's steep slopes, soil erosion and sedimentation controls shall be installed to the satisfaction of the engineering department prior to the start of construction. And number eight, the affordability plan shall be amended to include a unit distribution plant. A deed restriction for the set aside development must be recorded on the land records prior to issuance of the building permit and is subject to final review by the Department of Economic and Community Development prior to filing.
Thank you, Director Harrigan, and I see Commissioner Harrison's back. Commissioner Harrison, I had, Commissioner Randolph had moved to approve with the conditions recommended by staff in the staff comments, so I just asked Director Harrigan to read those comments for the record. So that is the motion on the table. Do I have a second for that? Commissioner Levy? Commissioner Randolph? Thank you.
Um, as I, as I stated earlier, this, our, our responsibility is not to judge projects on their aesthetics, it's to judge them on the law. And we are bound to abide by, by the laws of the state and this building does comply with those laws. The revisions that the, the, that the applicant has made has, has addressed many of the concerns raised, most egregious concerns raised. And the additional staff comments also provide additional specificity. So I'm very glad that we have the moratorium. Would potentially have, have fewer none of these projects going forward, but unfortunately, we have to, our responsibility is to comply with the state laws and that's, that's what we've sworn to do.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy.
Yeah, I, I share Commissioner Randolph's feeling that, you know, while we're compelled by, I believe, state law to approve this project, it's not one that any of us heartily endorse by any means. In particular, I've probably visited this site ten times in the last month, going up Haley Street, going up Byro, going in and out of both Finn and Poe. And there's no question that, you know, there, there are concerns regarding the traffic, the narrowness particularly of Finn and Poe Streets with the increased of traffic. There are two or three condominium units which, which, which directly come off of Poe. And I think, while I don't think it raises to the concern, to the level where it's sufficient threat to the public health and safety is to outweigh the need for affordable housing, I would like to suggest a possible friendly amendment, which is with respect to condition number three, that the applicant also apply to the police commission to make Poe and Finn Streets one-way. And that would be up to the police commission as to whether or not that would improve the safety of the access to the site. I'm not sure which way it should be because I'm not a traffic consultant. But I do note that if you enter the property from Poe Street, if it's two-way traffic and there's traffic coming west to east, that the sightlines are very difficult and it's so narrow that a vehicle over the center of the line, you might not see it until you're out into the entry, out into the street as you try to enter into the garage. But of course, the access to the Black Rock Turnpike from either Finn or Poe, each is problematic. So I would, if there's, you know, a support or be to add a friendly amendment that Finn Street, Finn and Poe Street be made one-way, you know, or that be a recommendation to be submitted to the police commission.
And Commissioner Harrison, I see you. I'll get, I'll get to you first as soon as we finalize the motion. Director Harrigan, I see your, your hand is up. Did you have a comment on this?
I just wanted to clarify that if, if that is something that the commission agrees on, that that, the proper agency to refer that to would be the local traffic authority.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Randolph, it's your motion, so thoughts on that?
Yeah, so I'm open to that amendment.
Okay, so the motion is, and of course, Commissioner Levy, you're good with that since it was your suggestion. So the motion will be amended to reflect that change. Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I would say I will be supporting this application. Look, I don't think we like it in many ways, but we did ask in good, to, for the, for the developer to make modifications, so it's a better project. And he in good faith did that, and I think some of the most gracious parts too have been improved. I don't see any evidence in the record to support the denial, it's just not there. It's a very dense area. I've been there many times. I'm reluctant in doing this, but we are bound by the law as Commissioner Randolph stated. I would ask if I can make a friendly amendment. If we could, just because it's a very dense area, this is very close to the homes there, could we ask the applicant not to perform any work on weekends, holidays and after five PM?
Commissioner Randolph? I'm sorry, Commissioner Harrison, as a recommendation or requirement?
Condition of approval, please.
Commissioner Randolph?
Let me, let me ask Director Harrigan, is, is that, does the noise ordinance, do you know the noise ordinance well enough? I think that's consistent with the noise ordinance, is it not?
I think it is consistent with the noise ordinance except for Saturdays. I believe that contractors can work on Saturdays. And there might be, I would have to refresh my memory on that within, it's actually not within the zoning regulations, it's within the town ordinances. And I think it's, it's monitored by the police department. And I believe that construction is right now permitted on Saturdays, so I would have to just double-check that. I'm not, I'm not certain.
Yeah, I'm certainly open to that. I just wanted to double-check that because I thought it might be covered with noise ordinance as well, but.
Yeah, no, that's fair. And I, look, I live in a dense neighborhood where sometimes there are parties that are very loud, but not, that may not be breaking the noise ordinance and I can hear, I can hear vibrations from music. I, I just want to be, I want, you know, I just want to make sure the developer is honoring the neighbors and their, their quality of life. I think that's what we can do. I think that'd be helpful and I would appreciate it.
I think that's a very thoughtful and sensible amendment and, you know, this is a grossly out-of-scale project for the neighborhood and I think it's the least we could do.
So you support that and Commissioner Levy, you as well?
I, I agree.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So the motion will be further amended to reflect that. Other, any other comments, Commissioner Harrison?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Braun or Commissioner Seibert?
Are we voting on the amendment or the whole project?
Does anyone object to, to the amendments?
I don't object to the amendments.
Nor do I.
So we will not need to vote on them then, so this is just on, this is on the full motion to approve with the conditions as stated. So any comments on that, Commissioner Braun?
Yes, I can't support. Yes, um, I can't support this for a few reasons. Despite the fact that this is an eight dash thirty G, we still are duty-bound to become fully informed. We cannot approve an application that still requires engineering review to see if there was adequate soils testing. In most other applications, when there is an expert on the other side, there are significant problems with testing that is done. And here, we're actually making it conditioned on consulting with the engineering department to confirm the accuracy of soil classifications, perk rates, et cetera, et cetera. I, I, we can't approve something, or we should not have to vote on something that's still subject to that level of research. We're, we're the ones who have to decide if this is going to present a significant harm to public health, safety, or environmental or historic concerns, we can't do that. So, I just don't think that even with eight dash thirty G, we should have to vote on something or decide on something that is missing that key information. Also with Finn Street, um, I think the amendment was intended to solve the problem of cars sliding right into the development when they go down Poe Street towards the new entrance. Um, I don't think we should leave that up to the traffic or police commission, I think we, we have to know right now what the design is going to be and approve it or not, it will be unsafe. By the traffic patterns, it will be unsafe, that's been determined in my mind with enough specificity, so, for those reasons, I cannot support this, um, application.
Thank you, Commissioner Braun, Commissioner Seabird, any comments?
I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I, I will be, uh, supporting this motion, uh, I agree with, uh, what my fellow commissioners have said, this is um, not an, a, a, appropriate project, uh, for the neighborhood, and, um, I think we all agree this, uh, part of Fairfield has uh, had to bear and a disproportionate share of, uh, responsibility for the, uh, housing production, particularly on the affordable side in this town, but again, as Commissioner Randolph pointed out, we are obliged to follow the law, we previously, uh, denied the application, um, citing specific evidence in the record, um, that demonstrated a quantifiable probability of, of harm, uh, to public health and safety. Um, and the applicant, uh, addressed those, um, we can argue about whether they um, could have gone further, but they, they addressed the issues that we identified, um, and uh, the, the most notable of which was the insufficient fire safety, uh, fire access, that has been addressed here. Um, additional setbacks, uh, et cetera, and I think with the additional recommendations uh, made by staff, uh, which, thank you to our staff, uh, those are especially, uh, thoughtful recommendations, uh, there's no further evidence, uh, in the record, um, to give us grounds to deny this application. I understand the point that Commissioner Braun raised, um, but, um, under eight thirty G, a lack of um, of evidence is not sufficient to, to deny an application, there has to be um, of evidence in the record of a harm, not a lack of, of evidence. And so, um, again, not a good, not a good project, but, uh, one that satisfies the obligations we have as a commission under eight thirty G, so I'll be voting in favor. Any final comments, or can we put this to a vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve with the conditions, uh, as stated, raise your hand or say aye? Aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Commissioner Braun, okay, the motion carries, uh, thank you for, um, your engagement on that, uh, and thoughtful deliberation over the course of many hearings, and, and to the public who participated in that as well. Um, and, um, before we adjourn, I will just say, uh, because you were not here at the start of the meeting, Commissioner Harrison, just thank you for your years of service to the commission and the town, uh, it's, it's, I appreciated working with you over these last few years, and, uh, um, your dedication to, uh, to the town, uh, to, uh, everything that this commission has done, a, a lot of hard work over the last year in particular, so thank you, and, and wish you all the best moving forward.
Yeah, likewise, and if I may, thank you to the commissioners, it's been wonderful serving with all of you, you guys are a smart, dedicated bunch. And while we, I know you might always agree on everything, I, you know, have the utmost respect and appreciate, you know, your point of view and all that, so, um, it's always been a good discussion. Um, anyway, I'm wearing upwards, thank you, and best wishes. Thank you, of course, to Emily and Jody, Jim Wendt, everybody, all the staff, Jonathan, thank you for everything.
Can I make a comment?
Please, go ahead, Commissioner Braun.
I wanted to thank Commissioner Harrison, as well as, I know Commissioner Ford and Commissioner Collins are not here at the moment, but I appreciate their diverse opinions, and I'm so happy that they were here for the last few years, and we're really going to miss them, so, thank you, Commissioner Harrison, for all the work you did, all your newsletters, and your, um, caring viewpoint about neighborhoods and the environment, we'll miss you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you all for, uh, another good meeting, uh, appreciate everyone taking the time out of their Thursday, um, with that, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So long.